The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here at the Father, thank you so much. It's beautiful to be blessed to speak as we move forward here this evening. That's my decision for our mission and our caring and the best interest in God, your director and all this. Jesus saying amen.
All right, I think Mr. Reed sent the minutes out of the last meeting, 30 questions. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Motion made.
Motion made by Mark, sir, second?
Second.
Second by Mark. How goes the favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right.
I do have a quick thing, something business line things to be taken care of real quick.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to read what we have here, an article, that's five, conductive hearing. And it's got here, you know, the consequences of this includes everybody here on board. It includes everybody in the audience. And a person who persists in conduct after following the warning that chairman may order that person expelled from the meeting. Last meeting, I was made aware of my hearing, I sometimes go pick up everything. I had a couple of outbursts that were, as far as my opinion, in fact, I don't make it an opinion, I think it's just real. Might as well say they were cheering and mocking fellow colleagues here on board and really trying to humiliate and embarrass when one of our former colleagues admitted they'd made a mistake, they moved forward from there, they asked our forgiveness, everything's cool. Well, then later in the meeting, you know, this person decided to go ahead and yell out the F U C K word. So I'm just going to say, if that happens again, I would hope that we as a board could take that person and say, you know, you're no longer welcome, at least in this meeting. I know we don't have evidently any time limits yet on, you know, we can't like suspend a kid for, you know, in school like for two weeks or something. However, you know, if this is going to be a kind of repeated thing, then maybe we need to look at that person being permanently expelled. So I don't know if we can actually do that, but we can at least do it for one meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mark. Do we know? Travis? You mentioned you had, did you have something for me to talk about?
Yeah, I have to, I've got to make a couple corrections.
Okay. While you're correcting there, we've got next only, we're going to need your input on this too.
[inaudible]
Thank you. Small acreage, oh, books. After the last meeting, Danielle was over looking at some information that we had already, we already have basically on the books that she thinks, she's not here this evening, she thinks would address the issue with us thinking we were going to be requiring people to have a variance when they build these for their storage or compost facilities. When, and I think she found it in 701, 2.5. What she was suggesting was, like I said, this was after the meeting, why not treat it as if, you know, which it's a new structure, you know, different than if you built new buildings, if the adjoining landowner is okay with the setbacks, the adjoining property owners are okay with the setbacks, then why should we really be so concerned about it? Because I think Kevin, I talked about this too. This compost facility that these people are wanting to build and there are grants available for it, when it comes about, they already have a site that they're utilizing a composting facility. The only thing that's going to change is it's going to have a roof over it and it might have some additional concrete retaining walls and others are contained there. Is that not right, Kevin?
Yeah.
So the spot on the property where they're doing this now already exists. It's really not anything new. The only thing that's going to change is it's going to be upgraded and it's going to be safer for the environment. There won't be the runoff and it won't be, it won't be water running on top of it, washing down across the ground because it's going to be under-rooked. So if that's not a win-win all the way around, I don't know what is. So I don't feel the need for us to really talk a lot about that tonight because I think Danielle, with her experience of having been here in the very beginning and been involved with these confined feeding operations and her being extensionated, being very familiar with it, I think we might as well just table that until it actually comes up because we haven't had anybody really come before us yet. We heard that they might, but... Has anybody really called you and said they're going to be here at the next meeting to talk about this or?
No, it was just going to be a possible two variances.
Yeah. We think they're going to be here, but we haven't heard from them. Well, all right. So in between now and the next meeting, you might, you might look at that 701 section and read over it so you're kind of prepared for what's coming at the next meeting. Okay, go ahead, Travis.
Well, that's, that's part of what I want to mention. I've got three things here to kind of tie all tied together, but 701, 2.5, possibly before it even becomes a variance, that's a question. Are, are we just going to start, and I'm just asking, and then the people doing the variance, they're asking the same question. Would, is a letter going to be sufficient where we're just accepting the letters versus going through the variance process? Now, I know a long time ago that has come up before, but we were just taking the letters to help the BZA. The BZA was just accepting the letter from the adjoining property owner to help them make a decision. But this, this is coming up again where is a letter just going to be sufficient if everybody's good to go, the, you know, a good chance that property owner sold this parcel to these people and, you know, they're both good, so that's just a decision we're going to have to make because that's going to be part of whether we're going to do a variance or not, if they have a letter.
Okay.
That was, that was question one and, you know, they were just kind of want an answer on that.
Okay. So you're saying that I wasn't, I wasn't around when the letters, just the letters to address the letters from the landowners, the adjoining landowners?
Yeah, if I, if I remember correctly, it's always just getting the letters and the letters were put into the variance packet also to help the BZA make their decisions. Yeah, our, you know, the applicant will say, hey, we've got this letter from the adjoining property owner, he's okay with it.
So it's kind of like going in a different direction here, but it's kind of like that letter is me, me and I, like the, 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 the,[768.16]
And I mean for the, for a person that is waiting, I mean that's waiting another thirty days.
Yeah.
Right?
You hold them up.
That's another thirty days. It's not, it's not like, you know, it's mandatory and it's an emergency situation.
And that's fine. I don't know. Now, that's something that's a little bit different than we've done before. That's more than just one letter to the adjoining property owner that the, you know, the rule's not being applied by. If you're asking then all the adjoining property owners need a letter. Now, we've not done that before. If you need a letter from every property owner, a joint, adjoining. The letters that were put together in the variance packet only was with the one property owner that, it's been setbacks basically.
Because they didn't make the setback.
Just with one person. It hasn't been everyone. So, that's going to be different. I think that's something you'd have to pass if you want it that way.
Well, Danielle's point at the last meeting was she thought the wordage was already in here for us to do that.
Just the one person and not, not everyone. Not every adjoining property owner do this part. Just the one, correct? Hold on.
Seven and seven, seven oh, seven oh one point two point four.
Have the agreed property owners.
Agreed.
And it's owners. So.
Agreed meaning the ones that are in opposition to it?
That the.
If you're in favor of it, you're not agreed.
Right. The agreed party. So, I mean, I guess it's just the one then. It's not going to be everybody. If that's the way you want to do it, it's fine. I mean, I just need to know. It's no big deal. But I mean, the variance packet is, I mean, that's, that's, that's a little bit of work with that.
I am new. If you have one agreed person. There's an objection. Then does it go to a variance? Is there a procedure? If there's that one agreed person and then it goes to requiring a variance? How does this work?
I think that's what we're trying to decide how it might have worked.
Correct.
So, there is no, there is no.
No.
Step to take if we have one agreed person. And we're talking about just doing this for the small acreage compost, right? So, on a typical variance.
No, it would be everything alike. Anything in that, in that ordinance.
Okay. So, this is all confined feeding?
To do with confined feeding. Yes, just confined feeding.
Yes, yeah, okay, okay.
Just for confined feeding.
Good. Well, Danielle will be at the next meeting. She will be a great help to us because she basically already knows most of this stuff by heart. So, let's kind of look into it ourselves. When it comes up, we'll address it at the time. But for the next meeting, we'll come up with something that, something that's more directed instead of not being sure of which way we're going to go when the time comes.
But that is something to think about. If that, you know, if we just go, if we just keep the saying, don't do the variance. You just have the one letter with the one adjoining property owner that is the agreed party. If you've got other property owners, I mean, if they object to it, they've not been heard. So, it may be a good thing just to get a letter from everybody.
All right. You'd be thinking about how you want it.
I think that would be the safest. Little more trouble, but it's not as much trouble as going to the variance. So, I don't know.
Okay. All right. We'll table that and then let's move on to the, probably the most pressing thing because there's going to be a gentleman coming in here probably in the next month or two wanting some information from us about subdivisions. I think you all had a chance to look at your existing rules on subdivisions. And I think we all agreed that they tweaked a little bit. And then I think I gave all of you a copy of the Harrison County ordinance. Firstly, since it's early in our ordinance, 153.01, I think we've all talked about this on and off a little bit. And we've thought made lots more sense just to get rid of the word average and make the minimum lot size two acres. Because when you throw average in there, you could have dozens and dozens of lots that are very small. But you had one fifteen acre lot that helps your average and makes it two acres. So, what's the point of saying two acres when they're not going to be two acres? Why don't we just say minimum lot size, two acres? I'd like some discussion on that so we can put that one to bed. In other words, all we're doing in our current ordinance is removing the word average and just stating that the minimum lot size in subdivisions will be two acres.
I think that was the intent to start with.
Well, I think it was two, you know.
It's just people.
I can concur with that. I think that two acres.
Correct.
Take out average. Make it a whole lot simpler.
Yes, it would. Anybody else have any comments on that?
Where did you say that was located? On the second notes for John.
153.01.
All right. We probably ought to load all these individually since we're going through kind of cherry picking what we're adding and taking away in this current ordinance. So, anyone who would like to make a motion on removing average and calling it minimum lot size of two acres. Motion made by Kevin is her second.
My second.
Second by Lori. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, the next one was road standards, which is 153.012. And then we were reviewing on page twenty-five of the Harrison County ordinance on pavement design. Which in, in our current ordinance, it doesn't specify pavement design. The way the road is being built and going quite enough deep there.
Which one is going to be what?
Our, our.
Which one we should.
The little can.
Four oh four, four point oh four.
Yeah. Yeah. So, Travis, in the past, I know we haven't had very many people recently come to us with subdivisions. But since this is a highway department issue as far as where the road goes and that, isn't this something that the superintendent needs to be involved with? I mean, he needs to kind of review the plans. That's the way our ordinance has it stated. And like I said, we haven't done any for a while. So.
I would say that we'd at least have a thing for training it to tell you how wide them are on the road. I know on the road in the forty-two, it should be thirty and forty-five feet that the state is on once they're adopted by the state provider.
Yep.
From my office. And I don't know what Rick wouldn't want necessarily, but it's the average number usually.
Probably even compare ours and Harrison County's and the detail that they're losing. If we're simply saying that it's to be brought up to the current county stone and asphalt standards, are those standards written somewhere? Could we, are there standards that are already written that we can put in our code so that it is more specific? So, if, once this is, is put out to the public.
Yeah.
If I wanted to look at that as a member of the public, I would have a very clear explanation of what the expectations are.
Instead of having to go to another place to find it?
Yes.
That makes sense to me.
This is all these little one, there and that page and that page. Harsh, those two.
They should be on the next summer order.
I would.
But, but it's not, it's not in the document.
It'd be, like, that'd be in the document.
That's right.
Either that or a reference to it somehow.
Well, that's what they do now. If they refer, they just call it the county road standard. Well, like you just said, what is that? Where are you going to get that?
Spell it out.
Why would you put it in here?
Spell it out.
That's right.
I appreciate the simplicity of being able to look in one place and know what it is without having to flip back and forth.
That's right.
So, I guess the question is, what is, how is that compared to theirs? Isn't this, isn't this a, does Washington County, uh, settle like anything with that standard? And that's how they come up with it? Or is it, I mean, is it pretty much same across the board from the county?
Well, it's very similar.
Very similar to the county.
The only, the only difference is Harrison County's is a twenty-two foot wide road. Ours is twenty. So.
I want more, I want every foot I get with distracted driving to there.
Yeah.
That's why. So, we, we need to be looking at four oh, four point oh three on the Harrison County one as well. That won't make it any complicated, but.
You have to remember, this is where it gets a little confusing. You have to remember one thing. What I'm looking at, which is very similar to what Harrison County's is, is simply Washington County road standard. It doesn't necessarily mean this is a requirement for a subdivision. And we need to focus on subdivisions. This is simply if the county takes over a road, these are the requirements that Washington County requires. Twenty foot wide, six inches of stone underneath, two inches of binder and an inch of surface asphalt. Total of three inches of asphalt, twelve inch minimum culvert size. That's, and slope shoulders either seeded with grass or riprap. This is for when we take over a road. This doesn't necessarily mean this is a subdivision requirement. Once again, we need to focus on the requirements for a subdivision. Which if we want to use these specifications for, which we already have, we can.
Well, page twenty-two, it's got, you know, the rules and regulations of the Indiana Department of Transportation. If the subdivision or any lot contained therein a bus to a state highway, which I'm, I guess it's, it would have to a state highway, not just a, I guess, a county road or something.
Yeah.
But would we just adhere to the same, which I'm assuming that's probably what this is back here. This is like thinking maybe they're going to abut to, you know, a state road, but.
Well, you're getting to a differ, total different set of rules if the subdivision comes off of a state highway.
Okay. So, is this on page twenty-four on pavement design and with the pavement? Would that be considered in just a general subdivision that's going to, I guess, abut to a county road?
On which page?
Well, is this talking about a county road or is this talking about a state road?
On Harrison County.
No, this is county.
It's county or Harrison County. I would like to propose that we consider the reason for roadway design. Because if you're looking at a roadway that is going into, that is going to be well-traveled by members of the community, you have, like Kevin mentioned, a safety issue, right? To make sure that two vehicles can, can pass and have shoulders and, and there's not going to be any obvious hazards, right? That are preventable. But the other thing to consider is, from my perspective, you know, if I have to get, if one of the houses within that subdivision has an emergency, I have to get a fire truck in there, I have to get an ambulance in there. If that roadway, and there's a lot of them in this county, that there are puddles bigger than what a passenger car can make it through. There are roadways in this county that two vehicles cannot safely pass. There are roadways in this county that, um, just even the, the tree limbs hang down to only the height of a passenger car. And if those are not maintained and there's an emergency back there at one of those residences, we can't get there. So, we need to consider not just, I, we need to consider not necessarily a difference in, in my opinion of what is this road, is it a subdivision or is it a county road? It needs to be what is a safe, accessible road for the community. Ninety-nine percent of these are going to end up coming before the commissioners eventually because the homeowners associations are not going to continue to maintain these.
Majority of them aren't even in existence.
No. And they may have been when it was formed, but as people move in and out and the vast majority of them, there's no enforcement on them. And then the money ends up somewhere that's untraceable or unenforceable. My opinion is some of those, those homeowners associations never existed to start with. I really believe, I've been in real estate for thirty years. I mean, there's a couple of them that have started since after me. And I don't believe there's ever been any kind of policing of their road situations at all. Like, there wasn't this supposed to be. So, you know, the place where we have some influence on that is in the beginning. And I would like to see us put standards in that would be up to what a county road would be for those, those reasons. If they're going to be county roads eventually, then they do need to be up to the county road standards.
Right. That's the goal. That's the goal.
So, is a twenty-foot, is that a typical, is that a typical street? Is that a typical?
That's what it's been, whatever that says, all right, if that.
That's, that's what it's always been.
That's what it's always been. That doesn't mean that it wouldn't be better if it was twenty-two.
It would be. But those county standards are adopted by, not us specifically, are they? The road?
They've, they've never, yeah, they've, they've never been, probably haven't been updated in, who knows when? It's, it's always been twenty feet.
Who's?
The highway department superintendent's recommendation to the commissioner.
And she's right. I mean, if you think about it, if you have a fire at one of these residences, you're, you're, you can very easily be talking to tanker trucks and an engine. And you've got all the volunteers. And you could have some pretty big vehicles that need access fast. And you're like, probably two feet would make a big difference. And that, I would doubt that.
It will make a big difference, but two feet is not that much.
I think you'll find that the county, from what I've seen, the counties who have updated their subdivision control ordinances have gone to twenty-two feet. The ones who haven't updated them for many years, like in our case, they're still twenty. For, for subdivisions now, whether, whether the highway superintendent, when somebody comes and asks us to take over a road that's been there for fifteen years, that's not to say that he can't go ahead and adopt it if it's twenty feet. All we're saying is from this point forward, we're saying we would require them to be twenty-two. And would you put that in a formal motion?
You mean on twenty-three, twenty-two feet wide for the subdivisions?
Are you, are you also looking at the whole?
Four oh, four point oh four?
Adopt the whole thing?
I did.
Yeah.
Right.
Because you're basically four oh, four point oh four plus four point oh five, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, Kevin's made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Deidre's second. All those in favor say aye. Okay.
I do think it needs to state pavement design for subdivisions because this in their ordinance also applies to streets, to any new street.
Yeah.
Um, so they might just want to rework the heading to make sure that it is cohesive with the portion that works inserted into our current.
So, that would be not only subdivisions.
Unless you might, I don't know. At that point, I think you have to talk with this highway superintendent, right?
Really? Yeah, because, I mean, my understanding is it didn't matter, you know, if it was simplified or anything. You know, the twenty-two foot, that's, that's different. But it didn't matter if it was in a subdivision or where it was. If they, you know, if the county was going to take it over, it didn't matter what it was, it had to be these standards. So.
Right.
From this point on?
Well, it's always been like that.
It's always been like that. If we change it, then we're going to have to do a division of say, from this point on, from this day, I don't know if it's constructed after this day.
And, you know, because then it's becoming a county, you know, it'll have that as a county road. It's not private anymore. If you've got one, five roads in a subdivision, I guess, and then you're going to have one that met the standard, it's now a county road.
Well, and I think that's what we were trying to do is say, you can't have these private gravel roads anymore where there's nobody maintaining them. If you're going to put in a subdivision and you're going to put in a road, it's got to meet county standards. And eventually the county's got to take it over. Correct?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's fine. Or you don't get that back. That's correct. Thank you. Especially to this area.
Well, where would you want to issue it?
I didn't know. I mean, it's probably just up to John or whoever, but I didn't know if it needed to, to state something in there. If we're just leaving it for streets, just period, I don't guess it matters. I think you're the one that brought this only to subdivisions.
I thought it was down.
Well, that's, that's the, that's the most pressing thing at the moment, that it's. Well, that's, that's the, that's the most pressing thing at the moment, but it certainly would make sense if it included new construction for roads, which we don't get very many of those, but...
Then you would have to let, let it knock the brakes, you see? Two more feet really are the big difference.
If there's anything else that needs to be considered in doing that as far as...
For the whole county, considering the subdivisions?
I mean, how many times do they just put in a new street, I guess?
We don't. We take over existing roads.
I would say that like if the road is twenty-five feet, you would take it over a twenty-foot, which has been, it's over twenty. You know, I mean, if it's twenty-one feet, I doubt it's gonna double off a foot of that roadway, you know, take twenty feet.
But we, we just don't, the county just doesn't go out here and construct new roads anymore, because it just doesn't happen. The only time there are new roads is when someone develops a subdivision and makes a new road. So the chances of this happening, uh...
Doesn't happen very often in Washington County. Not, not these subdivisions.
There's, that's kind of why I'm here too, is that we can talk about a few, and that's why I'm trying to keep up with what's going on, because we've had some inquiries.
Okay.
I wanna see how that works and we're appoint people because they've been asking about the steps to, the steps to starting the subdivision, who takes care of the roads, you know, the widths and all the, you know, details of it.
Yeah, which, this will take care of that.
Yeah. And I agree with what you say about linking, because even when I look at stuff, you're kind of looking and then you're like, okay, well, where's that? So it would be so much easier, especially when we're referring people to, look at information, um, they can do it on their own.
Well, we're kind of talking about two different things. There are going to be people who live in a subdivision that has the subdivision, that's actually paved and easily meets our standards, and if, if we require the twenty-two feet and make it include what the Highway Department says is required over and above the twenty now, the way it's stated, then that could knock somebody, somebody out. If we just, if we just stick to new construction on subdivisions, because there, there just aren't gonna be, we're just not gonna be taking over roads.
If that subdivision group comes in here and says, we want you to take over our road, and they will bring it up to new subdivision standards, we would take it, correct?
Yeah. Which is forty feet right there.
Yeah, but we're talking about twenty-two now. Well, if this passes, it would be twenty-two. But if they come in now, before this is passed, and we have twenty-foot on the books, we will take that over.
Correct.
If... But they're gonna have all of the...
Really, it wouldn't, wouldn't be a big, you know, I can, I can answer it, but it's cost our...
I can't imagine why two feet would make a difference to the Highway Department as far as a new road.
No.
I mean, it'd make it easier for them, even.
Or, uh, on the, the department, or I'd say that, they should put on their side, it's a big difference.
Yes.
Yeah, it'd be more consistent that way, yeah.
And I'm assuming that us making these changes, we're gonna go through a draft so we can then see how it's drafted and tweak any language, just like I was talking about, you know, we might want to change the wording or some of the stuff they have in the headings. I mean, it's gonna have to go through a draft stage at least, and...
Yeah.
Maybe John can get it done quickly, it's me.
Yeah. Okay, I'll talk to Rick Root, that I'm sure he'll be okay with. Then it would include...
I have an interruption.
An existing subdivision as long as it's brought up to county specifications.
I have an interruption.
Yes.
Where's the minutes? Send them around, please.
Sorry.
Thanks. We've blocked those before.
Yeah, we have.
No, they don't.
All right. Let's, uh, let's move along and just touch on the bond requirements, and this is an area where we would probably need John's input, but we can at least discuss a little bit so it's fresher in our memories for the next meeting. And this bond requirement is, is nothing more than, than an assurance that the developer is going to fulfill his duties in making sure that the roads that are built in these subdivisions are passable, are not full of holes, and not a safety hazard, that school buses can't get through, mail carriers can't get through, emergency vehicles can't get through. This becomes a safety issue. It's on page twenty-six, Harrison County. And I don't, I don't think we necessarily need to adopt this tonight, but I do think we should look at it again and...
I'm not sure how I feel about the, that in lieu of such bond, the subdivision may submit a, here, multiple letter of credit on behalf of the subdivision and secure it to the county in an amount equivalent to one hundred percent of the estimated cost of completion of the agreements. In the event that a letter of credit is used, it shall be written for a maximum length of one year, that's under Harrison County's five A to C. I mean, I think we ought to just say a bond should be done.
Instead of a letter of credit.
Right. I mean, wouldn't it make it easier just...
Be simpler for us. Letter of credit may be good one year, not good the next.
How long's it gonna take? Um, and that's another thing, I wonder, you know, how long are they given to get this road up and going and to a county standard too? Because if you go and stretch this, if you don't put a timeline in there, and it is stretched out as far as some of these subdivisions in the county now with the so-called road maintenance agreements, some of them are still non-sold. That would mean that, that it would never be, it could be twenty years before it gets to that point.
For it to never be done.
For it to never be done, yeah. I don't know what, I don't know something could be done on the bond end of that, where it has to be done within a certain, I mean, to me, it should not matter whether they've sold fifty percent of their lots yet, as to whether that road is in. That road should be in when that first lot is sold, to me.
I agree.
It's, it should be, that should be on their end, not on ours, and not on, you know, well, as long as fifty percent of, we have to get it done with fifty percent. If he makes enough, or whoever makes enough money off of forty-five percent of them, what's holding him to go ahead and finish it?
Agreed.
Well, if you have, if you have a subdivision with twenty lots in it, or even ten, and you're waiting on fifty percent, how many subdivisions do we have in this county that have never been developed? That less than fifty percent have been sold and developed?
We've got hundreds of them.
Lots.
More, probably in the county, probably more than we have that are built in, we're probably a higher percentage of not being built in than have been built in.
And each of them has multiple houses within that subdivision already, and they're still at less than fifty percent, so...
Actually, Brown Road's one too, isn't it? Brown Road's also one that we...
Only one of them.
That's Brown Road, and it's not the best either. I bet it's under the same type of...
Where at, where?
On Brown Road, isn't that, isn't that it? You go out, it's one thirty-five south.
Right, high, short corner.
It's paved, it's paved.
Yeah, but there's, there's a subdivision that goes off of it, there's a subdivision that goes off of it, towards the river, that Fork and Boy River, and that's...
Is that a school subdivision? Or is that a real one?
No, that's, no, those houses have been sold over and over and over and through there.
That's not Brown, that's...
Is it not Brown?
No. Brown is down here, you...
Fourteen.
Yeah, one thirty-five, no, that's not Brown.
Oh, it's, it's off of Brown Road, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's brown.
It's brown. And I bet it's the same one. I bet it's a private road.
Is, okay, and then that's a good example, that now would, is Brown a county road? Does anybody know?
Yes.
It is.
Brown Road's a county road, but that shoot-off isn't.
It is, yeah.
Question is, what's your definition of a subdivision? This is what you need to ask yourself, because the subdivisions we have in the county now, these arms that have been subdivided...
If the planning commission has a sign or flat on any of those and have approved them to be subdivisions, then they're subdivisions. Unless they have them vacant, and they're vacant, and they're just back to, well, brown. But if, if any planning commission at any time has signed a flat, right, I mean, four or five...
It's because we haven't held them accountable in the past. What I think of the sub, the ideal subdivision is, one, you know, they do it closer to the metropolitan areas, they go in there, they start building homes, and within two years, all the homes are built, and it's all paved, and it's all done, and people are moving in. What we've got, we've got parcels out here that were once beautiful farms, and there's thirty lots on them, and they sell three off of them, and they've been like that for twenty, thirty years. That's not a subdivision, that's somebody taking advantage of a situation that we failed to address years ago, and this is what we've got.
Or the court, off of Brown Road, is that it?
There's some nice houses down there where the, it's, it's not a county road, just...
Here's my question, and this is just from my office, and this is just a question to think about. There are subdivisions, like Todd just stated, that were failed farms that have been bought and divided, and that still happens today, and what is hap, what the gentleman had requested at the last meeting. My question is, if I see it at work, if a farmer or a guy wants to go buy that platted subdivision and put it back in the farm ground, is that gonna be a hassle to tear up asphalt from the view of wanting it to be back in the farm ground? That's my only question. Not that I, it's not gonna be like, thing against me, but like, say, I go buy thirty acres and I put in fifteen two-acre lots, and I pay worth of money to have a twenty-two foot road paved in, and nobody buys a lot, and remember, I paved the road, and then Kevin comes through and wants to buy my thirty acres and put it back in the farm ground. Would it be desirable to buy it if it has paved roadway in it? Would you want it to put it back in the farm ground?
People may worry about that.
Well, I mean, there's subdivisions out there that thirty-five now, now the roads aren't developed, but there's like gravel.
That's something you can deal with.
That's what I'm asking. Want to prove this, just think about it, if one house is built, and someone buys the rest of them.
If you require a developer to pave the road after it's thirty, forty percent full or whatever, the, the fact that they're spending that much money is gonna give them some more incentive to sell a heck of a lot more lots, and maybe even build nicer homes instead of dragging a...
I think more desirable, yeah.
I was saying, well, and I think that in those subdivisions, you're gonna get more buyers because you're going to have a road into it.
True.
And if there was a rare occasion that a farmer wanted to buy multiple plots and, and have that section of the subdivision dissolve so that they're, they can farm it, then, I mean, that would be up to them, and they would either have a really great road into their...
Honestly, that's probably gonna happen down in Mr. Smith's life.
That's what I mean.
Is that the one you're thinking?
I'm just saying, yeah. I'm just, I just know...
It's gonna happen down there.
But... No, there's nothing bad down there.
No, but people have bought these, they bought subdivisions thinking that it was farm ground, and then ended up with like fifty-two lots, and that's a lot of taxes to have to pay, because they, they bought some of it.
Yeah, we bought them.
It's not a way to...
Yeah, you referred to that, I mean...
Yeah, but you started paying the taxes on it.
True.
A year, two, until the...
I, I don't think that might be an issue myself, but...
I think you'll get more due diligence out of them by requiring a bond and by putting this cohesive to the way it is anywhere else that they would decide to go do a subdivision.
I'm not disagreeing, it's understood, you know, that that's happening.
I think it would also encourage developers to be more selective in the areas that they would look to develop.
Yep.
I agree.
Got us all the way around. Well, if you would, uh, look at that bond section between now and the next meeting, John will be back, and we'll get this, hopefully get this all ironed out, and...
And I think, can we discuss a time limit at that time?
Yes.
Because I think, I don't know, that may be very important under the bond or whatever, I'm not sure, I think that's a big question to ask John.
They go together, yeah. The two go together. Yep. All right, if no one is opposed to this, I, tonight, since it's kind of specialized, there's a lot going on, see, I hope to entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you all. Good conversation, made progress. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.